The June 27th meeting of the City Revere Zoning Board of Appeals is now called to order. We'll now have a roll call of the members. Mr. Pacilli, Mr. D'Angelo, Mr. Lopes, Mr. Mazzoni. Mr. Tucker is absent, therefore Mr. Pelton, the alternate, will be voting today? Present? At the request of a number of councilors, we'll take the takeout of order. We'll go directly to application A 1826. This is the application of Jeffrey Castaldo, Castaldo Realty Trust, 85 Colonial Avenue, North Andover, Mass., requesting a front yard setback and parking variance to enable the appellant to construct a 40-unit apartment with retail space on the first floor on lots 10, 11, and 13 at 529 Broadway Revere with parking spaces located in the rear of the building. We have received a communication from the applicant. In the applicant states, "We are respectfully requesting to withdraw our application for the project at 529 Broadway that is scheduled to be heard before the Zoning Board of Appeals on June 27." At this time, we would like to further discuss our project with pertinent city councilors and address any concerns that they have brought to our attention, as well as the concerns of any of the abutters to the project. We will submit the application at a future date. Thank you very much, Jeffrey Castaldo, Castaldo Realty Trust. The question before the Zoning Board of Appeals is granting leave to withdraw without prejudice. Prior to going to that issue, are there any proponents to wish to speak on this issue?
Yes.
Come to the... Please hit the button and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Attorney Miriam Cisero, C-I-S-E-R-O. 529 Broadway. On behalf of Ortiz Corporation, which is the business storefront. Yes, what we would like to... We were opposing this project because... Yeah, no, this is for opposing. No, we're not proposing. Okay.
Are there any proponents, those in favor of the proposal?
Hello. My name is Lance Kelly. I live at 59 Stock Avenue, Wakefield, and I would like to, at this time, withdraw without prejudice so we have time to talk to the neighbors and to the councilors and see what their concerns are. And so we'd like to withdraw this time without prejudice. Thank you very much.
Further proponents wish to speak at this time? Hearing and seeing none, we'll now take opponents. Anyone opposed to this project?
Thank you. As I was stating before, I represent the business establishment in the front storefront area. Just to inform the city council, we didn't know anything about this project of demolishing the whole area in the front. I want to let you guys know that we do have a lease. The lease is a valid lease through 2020, and this is something that the city council should take into consideration before issuing this type of approval. We just want to let you guys know what is going on. There's also another business here from Bread Market, and he's the same thing, the same situation. He also has a lease. I spoke with Mr. Lance, who didn't provide me any dates. He had no clue, didn't know anything about it, didn't want to discuss anything. So I don't know what kind of... How this Mr. Castaldo is attempting to demolish the building without speaking to everybody who's concerned about their business, especially a business that grosses a large amount of money, pays over $10,000 in taxes, has over 20 employees, and that's a concern to us. We would like to have more communication, transparency in terms of this project. Thank you.
Any further persons wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Bhavin Patel and 535 Broadway Revere, and my business name is Bread Basket Convenience Store. And I have the lease in 2019 November, and I have a lot of customers. I'm happy for in the Broadway and regular people for neighborhood. So everybody come in the happy for in the... My business is long in life, 30 years before the store is old. So I have a lot of customer, old people, and everything is happy for in the business. Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, councilors?
Thank you, sir. John Powell is 46 in the Pontus Street Revere. I represent the Ward 5 area of the City Revere. Well, this is not in Ward 5. It certainly abuts Ward 5. I drive down that area many, many times during the week, and I do so just to avoid the traffic on Broadway. It's a very narrow street, school street. It abuts a very strong residential area, Belgrade, McClure, Eastern Avenue, Tapley Avenue, True Street, that whole area down there. And I certainly believe that if anything of this magnitude were allowed to be built there, it would severely impact the area. I've spoken to Mr. Kelly, and I've asked him to speak with the owners of the property. First of all, there should always be a neighborhood meeting before anything is decided. In its present context, I think it's too large, okay? Now, Mr. Kelly has, as I just came in this evening, told me that he would be willing to have a neighborhood meeting, and I suggested someplace perhaps on a Monday night at the Mayno's when they're closed. Make sure that all of the residents are notified down that area, and also that the meeting is at 7:00, when people are home from work, had a chance to have their dinner, and you know, get to the meeting and express their concerns. I will say this, however. I hear comments out there all the time from people talking about traffic in the city. Traffic in this city is 80% or 85% regional. It's traffic going through the city. People say to me sometimes, "Well, why can't we be like Sargus? Why can't we be like Melrose?" Well, I don't think Sargus and Melrose has any auto body shops in the middle of their business district. I haven't seen one yet, and that's what some project there would replace. So maybe there is something that can go there that the residents would agree with, and that's certainly what I would support 100%, as long as the residents are agreeing to it. I represent the residents. They send me up here to City Hall to represent them, and that will be the way I'll vote on this. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Ward 3 City Councilor, Artico Naso, been serving Ward 3 for over 30 years. Traffic impact is a major concern to each and every resident, no matter where you live within the community. And I always predicate my comments by saying, "I'm very much aware of the fact that most of our traffic is created by regional traffic." It isn't all those folks going home to their homes in Revere and from their homes in the morning. It is regional traffic, but it's a concern that we have to bear with. And Broadway, on any given evening, when the school's in session and they break from 3:00 on, you can't traverse Broadway. It's almost impossible. It's gridlock. And I think, obviously, the building of 40 units on Broadway would add to the problem. I sincerely wish that this meeting with the residents was conducted a month or two ago. I think we're talking backwards now because now we're seeking opinions from the constituents that we represent and the residents who live here. It's a little bit late based on the fact that there's already things that are being discussed on social media and things like that that don't have factual information to come forward. So it deteriorates any project that goes forward. I would ask if you, within your reason, give them the right to withdraw. I would seek an immediate meeting with all folks involved. And yes, the project itself lies in Ward 3, but affects a lot of Ward 5, and it affects a lot of our community over Ward 3 and Ward 5. And we, as city councilors, don't have a vote in this particular matter. And this particular matter lies within your body. And all we can do as city councilors is represent the people that elected us to represent them, tell you our thoughts. And after we have that meeting, if you so grant that, then we can come forward and say, "This, in fact, is what happened at this meeting. All people with any kind of concern regarding the project stood up and was counted for and gave the reasons why they were against it." And they could simply just come to the meeting and say, "We just think there's too many cars on Broadway now." That's simple enough. But at least we want some participation from the neighborhood to give us a concern and relay it to you, and you make an intelligent decision based on the concerns that were given to us. And I think that the neighbors have a very, very valid reason to be upset. 40 units, way, way, way too much, and way too much of an impact on the community. Bear in mind that the proximity to Revere High School and Broadway, two of the major impacts of traffic abuse in our community, is right here. So we're going to only add to it with this project. So I ask of you to decide whatever way you wish in terms of granting a stay on this until you can make a determination. But I also ask that you mandate that the developer meet with the neighbors and come up with a solution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the commission.
The ZBA has received an email from City Councilor Stephen Marbido indicating his opposition to this project, indicating the primary reason being traffic congestion and parking congestion in the neighborhood. We also received a letter from Susan Vacher of 60 Payson Street indicating her opposition to this project because of, again, parking and traffic and the oversizing of the project. We received two telephone calls today, one from Joan Watson and one from Thomas Aman expressing their opposition to this project. Are there any further persons wishing to speak in opposition to this project?
Hello, board members. My name is Clinton Angel. I am the residential homeowner and have resided at the address located at 27 Cummings Avenue. It is across from the proposed site. Myself and all of my neighbors received notification of this meeting rather late on Sunday. Unfortunately, I was one of many of my neighbors to make it down to voice our opinion on this. A lot of us are opposed of the intended project. Again, I have resided at that property for the past 10 years. I have two children in the school system. Parking is taxing, to say the least. It does not matter what season, what time of year it is. It has become a problem over on Broadway. The traffic, needless to say, has become something to itself. 40 residential units, none of us are interested in having that type of a project built on that lot right there on Broadway. We do feel it's a little overwhelming, and with, you know, the way things are nowadays, it would just increase to an already monotony of an issue over there on Broadway. Thank you.
Any further persons wishing to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon. My name is Dan Rizzo, 35 Rowan Road, Revere, Massachusetts. I am in opposition to the project. I've made it clear before this board and other boards in the city, my feeling on the proliferation of residential development, especially large-scale residential development. I don't think you need to drive down Broadway more than one, two times to understand what's happening in this city with respect to traffic. We have... Not that this will for sure add to it, but we have a tremendous rat problem here in the city, and I think the trash that this building could create, particularly if it's not maintained, could be a real major problem for the city to further exacerbate a problem that we have. We're always told these apartments produce no children, but we know that's not true. Apartments do add to our school system. We're up 500 children in four years alone in our public school system right now. We have a need for a new high school. That's about $200 million. Our elementary schools and middle schools are exploding. I mean, you know, there's got to come a tipping point for this city with respect to large-scale residential development. It should be clear to everybody here that people in this community have had enough. We need to take a break. We need to take a breath, and we need to look and see which direction this city really wants to go in. If we're going to continue this race to pack as many people into this city as we can, that's a race that I don't want to participate in. And I'd like to think that we have members on this board and members of the city council and others who share the same feelings. We want to protect the quality of life that we have here, what quality of life we have left here in this city, and I'm hopeful that this board will get that message and send this message out to the public as a whole that our appetite for large-scale apartment buildings is over. Thank you very much for listening. Appreciate it.
Are there any further persons wishing to speak to the board in opposition to this project? Hearing and seeing none, the board will now take the question of granting leave to withdraw without prejudice. Mr. Pacilli?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mazzoni?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
This is granted. This project is withdrawn without prejudice. The next application before the board is application A 1811. This is the application of RBP Hotel LLC requesting to withdraw this application. The question comes to, before the board, is to grant leave to withdraw without prejudice on this project. Are there any proponents wishing to speak on this? Hearing and seeing none, are there any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, the question comes, leave to withdraw without prejudice. Mr. Pacilli?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
This is granted, leave to withdraw without prejudice. Yes. Pardon? That was the hotel at Shaw's. They withdraw it from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's before the city council.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah. The next application before the board is application A 1820. This is the application of Gary DiMasi, 173 Robey Road, Webster, New Hampshire, requesting a rear yard setback variance on the existing house and garage to enable the appellant to resolve an encroachment issue at 54th Street Revere to allow the appellant to petition the City Revere Planning Board for a subdivision approval not required to create new lot A1 Ford Street Revere. Proponents on this matter?
Good afternoon. My name is Peter Cochiati, and I'm representing Gary DiMasi, the owner of the property. Gary got this property from a friend of his through a probate who passed away, knew nothing of this, come to find out when he was going to sell the property. The prospective buyer's attorney did the title work, got a plot plan back, and realized that a portion of the house and the garage have been on the abutters land behind, and it appears it's been that way for about 80 or 90 years. So we, at that point, contacted the abutters behind and asked them if they'd be willing to do a land swap, which, other than going to land court to spend thousands and thousands of dollars for an adverse possession, didn't make sense, we were able to do it. Could be a little tight, but we were able to do it, an equal land swap with the Mangiellus who own behind from us, so that they're going to give us just enough to get beyond it. Obviously, there's no way we could get to 20 feet because we don't have enough land to give them to the side. The abutters, of course, who we're doing the land swap with, I do apologize, I didn't get a chance to file these earlier, did assent to it. These are the Mangiellus who live on the property behind us, and we respectfully asked if you could grant the variance. It's a hide ship that was not created by him, and this is the best solution that we can do. Again, there really is nothing else short of, like I said, going to land court. Would basically accomplish the same thing through a court order, but much more money expense and time would be involved. Oh, I'm sorry. May I? Thank you so much.
Any further proponents wishing to speak on this matter? Any opponents to this proposal?
Gentlemen, I'm not opposed to this as long as it's not giving someone the opportunity to create another buildable lot. There's enough building going on that's happened down there, and I just want to make sure... Mr. Henry, could you answer that for me?
It does create a lot.
It does create a buildable lot?
That's up to the building inspector, but I believe it does.
Then I would be opposed. I would be opposed to granting that.
Does legal counsel wish to speak? If you get a determination from the building department, this would be a buildable lot?
I'm sorry, me?
Counsel for the board?
I'll be honest with you, I really didn't look into that. My concern, representing my client, was just to try to get it corrected the easiest way we could, and unfortunately, maybe it is, again, I don't know, but I get...
It appears that a new 4,203 square foot lot is going to be created.
Well, their lot is going to be the same size, but now that they're going to end up having frontage on Ford Street.
It appears to be a 4,203 square foot lot. That could be the old lot, the way this plan is drawn.
The... They have this at the top, A1 is what they're going to have. I'm sorry, A1 is what we get. They already own A2, the 1313 square feet, and then that 1605 FB is what we're giving them. So that's what their lot is going to be now.
So they may be the...
They're going to have 29... It's a 2918.
Plus the 1605?
No, no, the 1313 in the back plus the 1605 in the front. The 4203, that was what Mr. DiMasi owned, what he has for his house, the 2598 and the 1605 would add up to that 4203. So the total of the lots that they're going to have will be 1313, and that's 1605. So it would be 2918 would be the square footage of A2 and FB. That's the combined lot for the abutters, for the Mangiellus.
It would not be a buildable lot?
Okay, so they have to come in front of the board to get... Again, I apologize. I did not look into that at all. You know, we were trying to do it the least intrusive and obviously the least expensive way.
I don't know if the building inspector would interpret that as a buildable lot. Well, it's up to the board. You can ask them.
I would certainly appreciate it if we could continue this until I've had a chance to confer with the building inspector.
Are there any further opponents? Any further opponents?
Mr. Clark?
Right, to help my colleague in Ward 5. It says here that it's clearly to create a new A1 lot. So the A1 lot is created in order to do something with it.
This is A1, which is the present structures.
Right. I think this needs clarity from, and we also get a room from the building inspector, whether it will be buildable after this approval is given, if in fact that's the case. Thank you.
Again, I would ask that this be continued until we have a definite answer from the building inspector relative to what can and cannot go there. Thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone wishing to speak further in opposition to this?
Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate the comments of my colleagues, we absolutely do not want to create any more further buildable lots down there. The gentleman... The property in question was owned by a gentleman, actually a very, very good friend, Dave Johnson. Some of you may have known, he passed away a couple of years ago, and of course, his heirs now looking to sell the property, but, you know, we don't want to see any further development down there. I don't know that... I don't believe that's the intention of the person, Mr. DiMasi, right now, who's looking to sell the property. But even if inadvertently it creates a buildable lot, that is not something that I think any of us here want, especially down in that neighborhood. Not to be redundant, but I feel like it bears repeating, there is already crowding in that neighborhood, parking is difficult, you know, and there's a certain quality of life that those people have down there with DiMash and so on, that some of those people have been down there their entire lives. So hopefully, this board will allow it to be continued so we can get an opinion on whether or not this would create a buildable lot, and if it does create a buildable lot, then I would like to stand on record in being in opposition to this. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
If there are no further persons wishing to speak in opposition, the board can take...
Mr. Clark, can I speak further, Peter Cochiati? My only concern, council members, is what's he to do? You know, they're not going to give us land for nothing. Their only recourse is to go to court to do it, which is going to be time-consuming and costly. That's my concern, is we try to do it the easiest way. Again, this is a person about the property, and even as his councilor said, through no fault of the zone, nothing about this. And I guess we're just kind of going to watch. I mean, obviously, if we have to, we have to, but it just seems this is the typical type of a case. It's a hide ship. We're trying to do the easiest thing. Could it be a lot? Maybe it is. I understand we're on a dead-end street with, you know, there are some houses, traffic, yes, but nothing like everyone's been talking about for the Broadway situation, things like that. There's no cop crews. This is a dead end, as you know, it's a dead-end street. So I'm, again, board does what it has to do to continue, and I leave that to your discretion and expertise, but I just feel like my clients have almost had no any situations. Only other request then is going to be to go to land court to get this thing together, and again, that just seems to go against everything with this various process and actions. I just want to give them a record.
Question now comes before the board to grant a continuance of this matter until July 25 at 4:00 p.m. Question comes on continuance. Mr. Pacilli?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
I have a question. Do you guys know Mr. Mazzoni?
Yes, he's... I draw five into the person. That mosh, that conservation, I can't see how anybody can build over there.
You can't. It's wetlands, Mr. Lopez.
Exactly. I have to look at it.
I don't think...
I think the other is... It's a buildable lot. That's another issue that we have to take in mind.
That's always with Mr. Johnson's...
Later on, if he asks, I don't think that's an issue.
And it's soaked with water. Just walking in, it's soaked. I don't think it's a buildable lot myself, but that's not my forte. lot myself, but that's not my forte.
And it could make sense for the builder to take a look at it, so being...
Mr. Loebz?
Where am I blessed?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Mizoni?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes? This matter is continued until July 25th at 4:00 PM. The next matter before the board is application A1821, the application...
I'm sorry, do I need to do anything else, or we just show up again?
You can show up, the...
Just show up again, it's automatic. Thank you so much.
This is the application of Hugo Rizzuto, trustee, Pines Realty Trust, 261 Rice Ave. requesting a six-month extension of City Revere Zoning Board of Appeals variance A1717 to enable the appellant to construct a single-family dwelling on Lot 188 and 189 at 263 Rice Ave. The issue before the board is to grant a six-month extension. Proponents?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Attorney Lawrence Simeone. I have law office at 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts, and this evening I represent Hugo Rizzuto, trustee of Pines Realty Trust. Presently, the locus is identified as 263 Rice Avenue. I understand recently, Mr. Henry, that the city engineer identified a new number at The present lot is two lots, Lot 188 and 189. They consist of eight thousand one hundred and fifty-two square feet with eight hundred, eighty-one point fifty-two feet of frontage. The lot exceeds the resident A district of six thousand square feet and six hundred foot of frontage. This board granted a variance for construction of a single-family home on July 26, 2017. That will lapse the rights under that variance unless this, unless two things. One is my client pulls a building permit by July 25, 2018, or this honorable board grants him a little bit more time, six months, to accomplish the task he has left. It is a single-family home, and we provided the designs on Rice Avenue, it's four thousand four hundred and thirty-four square feet. It did receive a height variance for about two feet because of the roof design, as those of you remember, and a setback requirement because of the porch out front for the front yard and a side yard requirement, and I believe also there was a principal lot coverage of forty percent, again, because of the deck and the way they calculate things. So I come here to tell you, as I presented, I have a letter from CBI and my client giving you a project narrative of what steps he has taken to show you in good faith, he has made a diligent pursuit of the time allotted under the variance, and as you can see, you know, he hired a civil engineer, a geotechnical engineer, he hired an architect in the early going, and then subsequently, what came afoul is the hiring of structural engineer. He had hired Arthur Chu, someone we know very, has been a long history of doing local structural engineering work, and quite unfortunately, when you went back to see Mr. Chu sometime in September, December of 2017, Mr. Chu indicated that he was well on his way of being too busy. He had too many projects and he could not handle my client's project. At that point, my client had to find a replacement engineer, and he hired a company called CBI. He had tried, he had tried one more time to hire another company called Boston Associates of Structural Engineers, and they also could not find time for him. So he retained CBI around January, March of 2008, based upon his recitation of the facts that I presented to you. Since that time, he's worked with William Sparrages, the civil engineer, to go to the Conservation Commission, and he recently received on June 6, 2018, his order of conditions to build. He believes at this point that with the ten-day appeal period going by, for that particular permit that was required for him to build, that he will be ready to present to the building department building plans, you know, sometime in August, and probably get a building permit in August. So with that said, we ask you to find that he has made a diligent pursuit of the permitting, he has just cause for his need for extension, and please grant the extension on his behalf. Thank you.
Are there any further proponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, are there any opponents to this?
Gentlemen, I represent the area down there, Lot Five on Rice Avenue. This fellow purchased one house down there, I think he's made at least a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment in the area. He has a lot, and he's looking to build, for lack of a better word, his dream house down there. He intends to stay there, it's a single family, it's a, I've seen some renderings of it, it's certainly a building that you would want on your own street, and I would come here today to support this gentleman with regard to that, and hopefully he can get in there sometime in August and start construction, and it'll be tremendous improvement to the area on Rice Avenue. Thank you very much.
Are there any further proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to speak as an opponent. This is a variance that was already granted, they're looking for an extension. It seems as though he's done his due diligence and has been trying, trying to get it done, so I absolutely would support it. Somebody that's gonna be staying here in this city, investing in this city, and wanting to do the right thing for the neighborhood down there, so for those reasons, I support the project. Thank you very much.
Inferioritification of the commission, my friend on the council wants to be a proponent. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, again, I rise for the occasion. This gentleman, Hugo Rizzuto, used to live and reside in Lot Three. Nothing but a first-class gentleman, keeps a wonderful property. He's neighborly, he's friendly, and he does the right thing for the community and the residents around him, not only keeping his property up, but he's also social with the other neighbors, and he make a compliment to the Rice Ave area, and I would be in favor of this.
Any further proponents? Hearing, seeing none, any opponents to this six-month extension? Hearing and seeing none, the question before the board is to grant a six-month extension of this variance. Mr. Pacilli?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Mizoni?
Yes.
Yes? And Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
This is granted, six-month extension. The next application before the board is application A1822. This is the application of James and Marie Leonard, 32 Fisk Street Revere, requesting a qualified lot variance and a parking variance on Lot 30 at 26 Fisk Street Revere to enable the appellant to construct a two-family dwelling at 26 Fisk Street Revere.
Hi, I'm James Leonard from 32 Fisk Street Revere. This letter from the city says it all. There's a shed there, I built it myself. I didn't know when I did it that I was shooting myself in the foot, because somewhere along the line, they changed the rules of the variance, you know, they say now you can't have a shed that knock it down. I didn't know that at the time. So it's my own fault for doing it, you know? So that's the only thing I'm asking for, is to take down the shed. Besides that, I think I meet everything else. The parking, I want to move a parking spot, and with this two-family house, I'm gonna add four spots. So I don't know how I'm really hurting anybody by doing that. And that's it. We've been on this street for, we've owned property here for thirty years, no one's ever had any problems with me, we've taken care of everything with your own, and that's all I can say. That's all I'm asking for, thank you.
Any further proponents?
Hello, my name is Christina Leonard, I live at 32 Fisk Street.
What was the address?
32 Fisk Street.
Can they name again?
Christina Leonard. I, it's for me and my sister, I speak on behalf of my sister too. I lived in the city my whole life, and I love it, I don't want to leave, so instead of, instead of moving out and buying a house in a different city, I would like to stay, and I really hope you guys agree to do it. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk and members of the commission, I've been servicing and working with the people from Fisk Street for many, many years, and the Leonard family has been right there since day one. I was elected thirty years ago, and they moved in thirty years ago, and they've been nothing but good neighbors to everybody in the community. They don't even know me that well. They just, they know of me, but they don't know me that well. It's because everything's working well on Fisk Street, and it's a nice neighborhood street, and I think this complimented what he said, he built a shed, now he's got a little dorm, and I think this is just a simple relief to help him out. Thank you for your concern.
Mr. Clerk, Mr. Chairman, again, I am a proponent of this project. I don't think you will find a finer family than the Leonard family, no matter how hard you looked, and I know they want to do the right thing for their neighborhood. As you can see, Christina and Stephanie, they want to stay in this city, they grew up here, they want to stay here, and this is an opportunity for their parents to help them out and build a home right next door, so I'm very hopeful that, that you will find it to, find a way to support this project. You know, it was an inadvertent shed that's kind of thrown this whole thing into question, and as Mr. Leonard had alluded to, at the end of the day, it's gonna create more parking than what is there now, so I'm hopeful that this board will support their proposal. Thank you very much.
Any further proponents? Hearing and seeing none, any opponents to this project?
Usually I'm not a recalcitrant.
Name an address for the record.
Name is Dennis Santner, 17 Fisk Street. I'm somewhat of a shut-in, people don't see me very much. I have some pictures taken of the situation down there, I hear nothing but nice things about these people, but my only comment is this, you've got two Airbnbs in that street, I don't even keep my car at that address because it's insane. Right now, with what's being done here, the parking is only nine feet on one side, obstructed on both sides, and ten feet on the other side, and I just measured a car and looked and said, you can't get out of the cars once you park them. And as far as making spaces, I have pictures we can add to the file, the curb that will be removed here is gonna take two spaces off that street, and the four spaces, I'm not so sure. The house that was put to the right of this one doesn't have the four spaces it needed. And now this one here is not creating spaces, I think it's gonna actually pressure spaces on the street, probably to the extent there's something between four to six cars, and that street's a problem now. Gonna have to park at Northgate. But I have the pictures, I think that what you should do is have the building department take a little closer look at what's going on with this project. Maybe there's some other things that can be done. I apologize. Can I submit these to the file?
Are there any further opponents? Hearing and seeing none, the question before the board is to grant a qualified lot variance to the applicant. Mr. Pacilli?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Mizoni?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
The next application before the board is application A1823. This is the application of Mandeville Signs, 676 George Washington Highway, Lincoln, Rhode Island, requesting a sign size variance to enable the appellant to install new signage at the Showcase Cinema Deluxe, 505 Squire Road Revere. Proponents?
Good evening, Wendy Regan with Mandeville Sign located at 676 George Washington Highway, Lincoln, Rhode Island, 02865. Applicant on behalf of NII Entertainment. I also have with me tonight Shane Judge?
Sean.
Sean Judge from NII Entertainment, and he is the area manager charged with this particular location. The board has received the completed application, including the plans and the answers to the questions on the application, in an effort to keep this as brief as possible. I would just like to reiterate that this is an extremely large building, and as we all understand, a zoning bylaw could not possibly be drafted with language that could address every specific set of circumstances that may arise, hence the process for a variance request. This is a massive building, this is a theater with, how many? Twenty screens. We are talking about a building that is four hundred and forty-five feet long at its frontage by thirty-eight feet tall. The intent of the zoning ordinance is in fact to control the size and the number and the location of signs in an effort to minimize their impact on the visual environment. It is our opinion that the secondary signs have been designed in an appropriate scale and massing for the building wall where they will be erected should this board decide to grant the variance. One last reminder that the overall building would qualify by right for a total sign area in excess of twenty-five hundred square feet.
We're having difficulty hearing back there. If you can take your conversation, miss, if you can take your conversation out of the room, miss? If you can take your conversation out of the room. Go ahead.
Thank you. I was just wrapping up by reminding the board that the building in fact does qualify by right for a total of over twenty-five hundred square feet of signage. That would be the total allowable for the primary sign and the total allowable square foot of sixty-five square feet for the secondary signs, where when looked at as a whole, as opposed to two separate sign types, the proposal is for just over twelve hundred square feet, still considerably less than that which would be allowed overall by right. Thank you.
Any further proponents wishing to speak on this matter? Hearing and seeing none, are there any opponents to this application? Hearing and seeing none. Question now before the board is to grant the signage variance. Mr. Pacilli?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Loebz?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
This is granted.
Thank you.
The next application before the board is application A1824. This is the application of Carlton Street LLC, 787 North Shore Road Revere, requesting a qualified lot variance to enable the appellant to construct a two-family dwelling on Parcells 21 and 22 Carlton Street Revere.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Corey Rhodes, I'm an attorney with the Ambrosio Brown LLP, 14 Proctor Avenue and Revere. Very similar to the last proposal, this is a address on Carlton Street, approximately 14 Carlton Street, that had a small structure in the rear, and again, is, we're asking that it be a qualified lot under the HD zoning district, so that my client, the Nakashian Brothers, can build a dimensionally compliant property that has all required parking on it. It's a fairly simple proposal, and we're happy to go over any questions you might have, but it is a qualified lot variance that we're seeking.
Any further proponents? Hearing and seeing none, are there any opponents to this project?
Hi, everyone. My name is Fatma, I am the owner of the 1012 Carlton Street.
What is the address again?
1012 Carlton Street. 1012 Carlton Street. That is the house just next to the land. Actually, I bought my house like a year ago, in August 31, 2017, and when I got the house, I thought that I have a parking lot for a two-family house, but later on, they said, "No, you have no right for any parking lot in this space." So I said, "Okay, I'm going to use the land, so I'm going to pay taxes and keep...and pay for the maintenance for the...every year for this land." So I was doing my part. I was paying the taxes for the land. I was keep maintaining the land, and here I found that like months or so, the realtor of the land called me just to...he told me he's going to sell it for someone else, and he's going to give me a parking lot. I said, "But there is no way to have a two-family house in such a small parcel, because if they're going to do that, they are going to have...they are going to block me from my backyard. My three bedrooms is facing the parcel, and all my windows is facing the parcel, this parcel. So if they're going to build any house, any kind of house, I will not have any sun or air coming to my bedrooms. So I will live in the dark day and night." And just bought this house a year ago, and I told them, "If anytime you want to sell the house, I'm willing to buy it, just to use it as a parking space for my house, not to build a house on it."
Thank you.
So I don't think that's fair, paying...I am taxpayer for this particular parcel, and somebody else will come to the house and blocking me...blocking my house from sun and light. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further opponents to this?
Hi, my name is Louis Lea. I own the property at 70 Revere Street. I purchased the property about a year ago, and doing major renovations on it, and I got approval for a two-family designation. I had to go through all the legal steps with the town for parking spaces. I haven't done the two yet. I haven't moved into the house yet. I feel the parking is crazy on Revere Street. You can't park on the even side. I used to live right next door for seven years, and my wife and family came right from that block. She knows the area very well. We're moving back, and we needed the parking. There was already one space there, but just to get a parking spot for my vehicle, I have to park across the street, which is already crowded anyway. There've been parking spaces put in for houses to be compliant on two-family houses on the street that didn't have the parking from years ago. So I think it's really too crowded. I feel that at this point, if you start doing variances, which I wasn't going to do if I couldn't be compliant with the existing lot, but I had to have a surveyor, I had to go through all that process to legally find out if I did have the parking. Now, it's going to be on the even side. Obviously, I'm not taking up any spots because there's no parking space there anyway, so you can't park. So I'm opposed to the project because of the reasons that I've stated, being too congested with parking. Thank you. No, I do not. Yep.
Do you live right off of Revere Street?
I bought the property. I'll be moving in as soon as it's finished.
You bought the property, so you're building something right now, sir? That's what you're saying.
I'm renovating the property. That's the existing building, not adding on.
And you have parking for that, correct? You've...
I have parking for the single-family that it was. I went through to get a two-family designation. That means I have to extend parking on the left side of the house because nothing can be built in the front anymore, and I had to have my plot plan surveyed, so I had the distance for two additional cars on the right side. And that's to put a basement apartment in, which my daughter is going to live there, so...
Okay. No, I get the clear...okay.
Yep. So I'm not living there currently because the house is under construction.
I'm listening.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for the attorney.
Yeah, I actually have some additional information that I could fill in as well. Just on the first comment, the two-family that's going in does have four parking spaces, and is something that we had worked out with the city planner and going through this process as well. We're actually building two more parking spaces that are going to the 10 and 12 Carlton Street property. My clients are trying to buy the property. We thought this had been conveyed to them, that these two additional spots are going to this family.
Going to the others?
Yes. So when we went through the process with site plan review, they identified that we had some extra space and that we could put in some more parking. So we're building a total of six parking spots. Two are going to go to this house, and four are going to go to our two-family, and that's the required number.
For the opponent, I mean, she's against...
I don't think they know that.
You don't understand? Let me...I got a question. Okay. She said, "Now..." The whole intent of this is that there was garage on the property, correct? That means a common ownership?
It actually...we went back in the title, and all the way back to the '60s, there's been no common ownership in this property. That's where kind of the trail...
But that garage is now gone?
That garage has been taken down.
Okay.
It's a separately owned lot, though.
That's what I wanted to clarify, yeah. Thank you.
Are there any further opponents? Hearing and seeing none. Question now comes on granting a qualified lot variance to the applicant. Mr. Pacilli?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mazzone?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, it's granted. The next application before the board is application A-1825. This is the application of Kevin Marley, 49, Venerado Ave, Hull, requesting a lot frontage variance to enable the appellant to construct a single-family dwelling on parcel nine adjacent to 123 Pomona Street, Revere.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Lawrence Cantino, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, Massachusetts. With me today is the potential developer, Mr. Kevin Marley. The only variance we're actually requesting on this lot, this is in the HD district of the zoning code, and the only variance we would be requesting is the frontage width. We have 39. The required is 40. As you can see from the plot plan supplied, each of the neighboring properties also have 39 feet. We do comply with parking and all the setbacks within the HD district, so we're only talking a matter of a foot, and this is to build a single-family home.
Any further proponents?
Mr. Clerk, members of the board, I am absolutely a proponent of this. Mr. Marley has been a major contributor to our community for a long, long time in a very positive way. He does great work. This, to me, is the type of thing where I think the variance project probably was set up for, there's a foot short. So that's a hardship right there. And so, you know, to me, given the reputation of the developer and given the set of circumstances, I'm absolutely a proponent of this project. Thank you very much.
Any further proponents? Hearing and seeing none, are there any opponents? Hearing and seeing none. Question comes before the board to relative this variance. Mr. Pacilli?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mazzone?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted. No further business. The next meeting of the board will be July 25.